All right, this Livingston City Commission meeting on October seventeenth is called the order roll call please.
Chair News.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
President.
Commissioner Schwartz.
President.
Commissioner Lyons.
Here.
And Vice Chair Cale is excused tonight.
Of course.
All right, first on the agenda is general public comment. Individuals are reminded that the public comment should be limited to items over which the city commission has supervision, controls jurisdiction or advisory power. These are for items, this comment is, this comment period is for folks that want to give comment over items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the room that would like to give comment? Welcome, Lindy, come on up and you can start if you don't even address and please sign in.
Lindy Gibson, two fifteen West Clark apartment one oh three, and I don't know what was on the agenda, so I only have two comments anyway. Anyway, um, five years ago, I started as a senior volunteer for the city of Livingston Park and Rec Department, and I've been painting every summer. During warm weather and when I started doing that, I started to see Livingston through a different lens and across the street from the civic center on the swimming pool all boulevard, there's two signs there, one that's been there since nineteen eighty-one, when they worked on the bridge on Yellowstone Street, and then a new naughty pine one that was installed when Dan was our park and rec director. And I, and it dawned on me that the lagoon is actually the Miles Park Lagoon. And it's not been addressed and it's not been changed. And now that the park and rec department are done mowing lawns for the season, basically, I would really, really like to see those signs corrected. Um, just because I think they've got the time for it and as time goes on. Um, but anyway, three different times I've gone to the clerk and recorder's office and gotten the actual documentation and given it to three different sources and nothing's been changed. It's been almost a year and that's kind of discouraging and I know you kids. I know you guys have a lot on your plate, but I'd like to see that get corrected. Also, I don't know if the comment period is over as far as changing the city logo. But um, the Yellowstone Street Bridge is probably the most photographed historic landmark in the city of Livingston. And I'd like to um, put my vote in to keep the current logo. I mean Livingston's changing a lot. I have no problem with it at all. But if we could not change the logo, because the one before that was a brown sleeping giant, it was kind of not very attractive. And this is the best one I've ever seen, and I've seen some of the candidates for changing it. But if we could, if we, if Livingston changes at all, I would love to see us keep that logo on all our vehicles and T-shirts and stationery and stuff. It's just, it's beautiful. I just can't think of anything else to top it. But anyway, that's it. Just um, if we could get those signs corrected so that people know, because when we started doing Summer Fest, I went to the chamber and I said Summer Fest is on McLeod Island. And they did their homework and found out that it was on McLeod Island. It was not at Sacagawea Park. Originally, we had six islands. Furthest one was at Twelfth Street, the Lurkheim Island. Across the street from TJ's is the Lurkheim Building, and they owned that island. And then um, at Ninth Street, we have um, was that four minutes?
No.
Wow. Um. And at Ninth Street, we have um, Urbac Island and then Seaback Island, which is, there's two islands out there. And then Sacagawea Park is actually on Swindlehurst Island. The Swindlehurst family donated that. And then um, McLeod Island is after General McLeod, if you've ever been to the Billings Airport and there's a a soldier on a horse with a sword in the air, that's General McLeod. And then we have Crony Island, which the river used to cut behind the Enterprise and go along. Then that northern piece on that side of the river is Crony Island. But I think as time changes, I'd like us to keep our facts straight. If that makes sense. And then there's several places in town over in the northeast corner of town that George Denton himself, when he moved up here, there's a street that's even Absaroka and it's spelled so goofy. And and actually, the Indian tribe is the App, A P Absaluka. And we've changed it to Absaroka. If we can just be consistent in keeping the names proper, I mean, even on the Billings move, it's so goofy, they call it the Absaluka. And I go, oh, my gosh. But anyway, that's all. Just if we can keep facts running congruent and consistent, that's all I ask. But yeah.
Thank you, Lindy. And I, I know you brought this to the city some time ago. And we normally don't do back and forth, but I do want to give Mr. Gager a chance to comment on the signs.
Okay.
And um, the reasons why we're updating the logo, because I apologize, you emailed me and I'm in this moment.
That's okay.
Remembering that I didn't respond to you and I'm usually better. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Um, thank you for your comment.
Yeah.
Let's get through public comment first, if that's okay, and then if you're comfortable with responding to these things at the very end. Okay. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to? Welcome.
Hi, how you guys doing?
Hi.
I hope you guys somebody have met me. My name's Brian Monahan. Um, we're doing some work to try and help the folks get out of the cold for this winter. But I, my count and some of the people that I'm working with within HRDC, uh, we're at twenty-nine within the city limits with zero form of shelter. Um, coming up in November. I'm sorry. I, by our count, we're at twenty-nine individuals in the city without any form of shelter whatsoever. Um, the numbers get into triple digits of those living in their cars. Um. There's a lot of the affordable housing has been about Brady. The options are slim for these folks. Um. I have six campers motor homes that have been donated uh, for this cause. I have another half dozen that are pledged, and that's with a handful of asks. Um. There are these resources for this season. Um, the HRDC will open November sixth, but they're looking at ten, maybe fifteen beds. Um, we are getting that with great resistance, trying to find somewhere where these individuals can park. Um, even something on a a a affordable, some of the people we were working with three months ago that they had no means, now they have little means. They could do three hundred, five hundred, six hundred a month, but um, we're trying to get them into these campers, but I can't put them into the campers if they're just going to be on the street violating code and violating law and then they're being harassed uh, and and compounded. But a lot of these are good, hardworking people that are are trying their best right now. She used my ignorance of the landscape here as I I I've been back and forth about five years, but I really didn't dig into this until early this year because I myself was was in that same situation. What we're doing is trying to fill the gaps that we're in and uh, and and provide, if we take resource out of a community to put it back in. And that's part of the program that we're working with is trying to get people into these homes, have some volunteerism around it. Uh, connection with the spree if they have mental health services needed. Uh, Southwest Chemical, if they have some substance stuff. Um, you know, CHP, if they have some other stuff. Uh, there's options outside of the county, but if we do that, we take them away from their essential services, the food resource center, the spree, Southwest Chemical, they can't make their, they can't make uh, access to those um, to those essential services and they're one offs and they're not guaranteed. I do know that there's some land that I was told the city has over off M Street, uh, where there was uh, previously was set up for more motor homes. Um, but winter is upon us and uh, and I would just prove us trying to creative and maybe find some way to show grace to try and help these folks. Um. I am certainly willing to do whatever was within my humble means to do so. And we certainly, we have mechanics that are willing to devote their time. We've got some private people who've bought parts for these, these campers, try and get them running. Um, just here humbly asking you guys to help us uh, figure out a solution um, for for the winter to come. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
My first time.
Sorry, it's all right. I just.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you, Miss.
Lindy's our official city volunteer. Thanks, Lindy.
She is a, been a saint for us, so.
Hi Patricia.
Hi. My goodness, week would not be complete without this. This is Patricia Gray.
Neither would ours.
Thank you. Boy, great minds spend on the same path. I'm here about science because Sacagawea Park. Um, I, the city commission, I probably is aware that there was a very nice sign that said Miles Park and it was over near the ban shell. And it was either stolen or it was taken down without the public knowing about it. And I would certainly put up a reward for finding out who stole it or who took it down because I I've been in conversation with the Miles at the Swindlehurst family who donated all the land for Miles Park and the Swindlehurst Island. And they, in my conversation with the Miles family, they're very uh, appreciative of that sign. It matters to them. So these people who gave us the land that created Miles Park seems like we should be at least respectful of that, the signage that told us of their gift. And we are, and we are working, those families are working with our city manager to create the wording so that never again there's a as necessary phrase in the donation of the Miles land and never again will it not be a park, period. That's the wish of the family and we are working to make sure that that wording is there so that we don't threat, we aren't threatened with losing it. Um, so I'd like to address that sign. Um, it does, and I've been an advocate, as you well know, of painting our civic center and our ban shell, and we're getting into fall. And if we, if we don't paint it, this all, I would like very much for us to take a serious look at just painting where the swallows nest up around the back part of that that building, because this is when there's, their nests are gone. And they don't care about the nest and then you come in, you scrape the nest and paint right there. And then in the spring, when they're just in love and having babies and making their homes, then we don't want to destroy their, their happiness next spring. So it's something to consider. I also would ask that the city commission give that beautiful building the respect that it's due. For three years, there's been graffiti on that front of the building. And uh, whether it was purposeful or not, um, I would respectfully ask it, Lisa, the fire department, we get down the Christmas lights, which look horrible. And we clean the front of that building and possibly just paint the two panels um, that are um facing the, the outside as you come out the door. And and yell, I've, I also want to give the city this wonderful Economics of Historic Preservation book. Uh, Donovan Ripken is probably the most well-known person in this area. It is, I am an environmentalist. This is environmentalism, saving historic buildings. And I paid ninety-five dollars, all of us paid ninety-five dollars when we were looking at Eastside School, finally becoming the shade center uh, to Mr. Ripken. And it shows the value in a community like ours of saving our amazing twenty hotels. As hotels. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Patricia.
May I give this to the city? I just.
Thank you.
It's, is loaded.
Thanks, Patricia. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to offer comment? Good evening, Leslie.
Hi. Hello, everybody. Leslie Pygell, Livingston Area Chamber of Commerce. Um. So just a few things. First of all, on a good note, before I get into the meat of this, uh, tomorrow is National Chamber of Commerce Day, October eighteenth. I'm hoping to have a proclamation in front of you for next year because there wasn't enough time. Um, but uh, we feel we offering anybody to stop by the chamber tomorrow and check out and see some of the new things we're up to and uh, what we've accomplished so far over this last year, which has been a tremendous amount. Um. On the second note, um, again, I wanted to bring up, I know that I was on Zoom call last time, um, in regards to uh, the um urban camping uh, situation in Bozeman. Uh, there was a recent um ordinance change in Idaho. Um, so that's another city that's jumped on this to get ahead of it, to actually have an ordinance placed on the books. Um, which for us here in the city of Livingston only falls under parking, um, under the parking ordinance. So if we have something for the future, for the use in the future, not knowing how this lawsuit is going to be um, affected over in um, Bozeman. And the reason why I bring this up yet again, if we could please move, um, you know, have a serious conversation about it, whether it has to go through planning or whether it is a commission issue. Um, I have met with Grant and stopped by a few times to discuss this. Simply because of the business complaints that I'm already receiving on Main Street. Um, from the Livingston Bar and Grill all the way down to the third block of Main Street, already dealing with people coming into the businesses. Um, using bathrooms, causing problems, having to be kicked out of their, their businesses. Um, we know that the police department is, has their hands full or ready with lots of other issues in our community. And so this is an opportunity for us to be able to um, kind of formulate a plan and move forward with, you know, pulling HRDC into the factor, really having a good conversation with what is um, occurring here, what's going to be occurring, not only our state, California, Nevada, Idaho, and many other states, Colorado. That's another one that's addressing the same very issue. Um, before we end up seeing the, on the northern, you know, flatlands or southern flatlands, another big, huge um, encampment against, simply because nobody knows, you know, kind of what the plan should be. Um, I mean, just yesterday, there was a gentleman roller skating, throwing rocks at cars and he um, hangs out down here on Park Street. And he's already had multiple um, complaints already um, about him. So I'm very disappointed in um, some of the actions that we are seeing here in town and what we are supposed to do, because everybody is really trying to be, you know, very compassionate and we are, and I as well. So I think that we have to really find a way to come up with a plan, um, moving forward. And I definitely appreciate your time this evening. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Leslie. And thanks for keeping us in the loop on all the chamber activities too.
It's been a very busy year.
It seems like. You're just in the paper today too, I saw.
Yeah. I tried to keep that all positive.
It was positive. It's your event. Is there anybody else in the room?
It's interesting, there's a three second delay on real time on this screen. Does anyone else notice that? And three seconds later, it comes.
Interesting. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to offer a public comment? Otherwise, I'll go online. One, okay. I'm gonna look online. Is there anybody online that wants to give general public comment? Don't see me. All right, general public comments quote. Moving on to the agenda, we have three consent items tonight commissioners. Is there any that you want pulled for discussion or can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items A, B, and C. Second.
Commissioner Schwartz and a second by Lyons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Four zero, motion passes. Moving on to our proclamation tonight. We have a proclamation declaring October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three as lights on after school day. Whereas the city, citizens of Livingston stand firmly committed to quality after school programs and opportunities because they provide safe and engaging learning experiences that help children realize, realize their full potential. Support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive when they are out of their classrooms. Build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults. Engage families, schools, and community partners in advancing the welfare of our children. Whereas after school programs provide critical support for the academic growth and well-being of youth and offer new experiences and opportunities to help young people learn and grow. After school programs provide innovative, hands-on opportunities for you to engage in learning and connect with caring adults and peers in a safe and supportive environment. And whereas lights on after school, the national celebration of after school programs held this year on October twenty-sixth promote the importance of quality after school programs in the lives of children, families, and communities. And whereas Livingston is committed to investing in the health and safety of all young people by providing expanded learning opportunities to help our children learn and grow, while helping them develop the skills essential for success in life and work. Now therefore, be it resolved on behalf of the Livingston City Commission, I'm Melissa News Chair, do hereby declare October twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three to be lights on after school day in Livingston, Montana. Mr. Gager.
Thank you, Chair News. And father of two young boys, I thank all providers of after school programming in the city of Livingston. That's all.
Thanks. And you know, commission, I apologize, I was going to follow up on a couple of public comments to give Mr. Gager a chance to reply. Are you okay with me doing that now before we move in? Okay, my apologies and my apologies and my apologies. So, um, Mr. Gager, I was wondering if you could, I if, I'm sorry, I know that you've done this report previous meetings, but just to make sure everybody's aware where we are in the process with signs. And then also, um, why, why we're doing the logo update?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, and actually, they are interrelated topics.
Right.
So, um, I appreciate the, the public comment that we heard this evening regarding the signs and uh, certainly am aware of the um, the geographic names in, in the park area and please know that um, as we work through the logo process and the branding process, that will lead into the um, sign update process that is um, targeted through the growth, as a result of the growth policy, not only wayfinding, but also recognition of both historical and cultural um, amenities and assets, um, and also recreational assets uh, within the city. And so there will be a, a larger signage effort that commences when we um, have the, the logo settled. And um, the reason that the, the city commission um, has, has asked for an update of the city logo is, is, um, quite honestly, the, the new logo or the current logo really doesn't reproduce all of that. Well, it has about eighty different unique colors in it. And, and so, um, when it, when it's reduced to a, a smaller form, whether on a, a business card or something like that, it's, it's very difficult to, to make out in color and reproduce in color. And, and so that's uh, one of several reasons that we are refreshing the logo.
Um. So thank you, but I, if you can stay till after and talk, that would be best. We can do, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know if I was allowed to respond.
No, no, but afterwards, we're happy to talk around the blade. Um, there were some other things that are brought up tonight that would be more appropriate, their executive branch items, so it'd be more appropriate for people to reach out to your danger and he can direct them to the correct staff. But I know some of the things are in the works, um, regarding the parks and the civic center and um, urban camping policy, like those are bigger conversations, I think, for the executive branch and commission to have as data is collected and work moves forward. Is there anything you would add to those before we move on with the agenda?
Uh, I, I would agree, each of those is a, a larger topic that probably warrants an agenda item in the future.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything that you all want to add before we move on? Okay, okay, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is scheduled public comment. The Prospera Business Network, Mr. Gager.
Good evening. Paul from Prospera is here and um, you'll notice that, that uh, action item ten A is a letter of support um, for Prosperous Business Network. And so I will turn it over to Paul to me. Talk about content.
Thank you. Yeah, the, um, Paul, I'm the executive director of Prosperous Business Network. And um, I'm here tonight requesting a letter of support from the city of Livingston uh, for our application to continue serving as the uh, regional certified regional development preparation. I have a handout for you if I can pass that out real quick. It's, it's just meant to be a, a really quick snapshot. Um. Prospera served as the uh, CRDC for Galton and Park County for a number of years. And we're required to reapply for that certification formally with the Montana Department of Commerce uh, every so often. And um, that's, again, that's why I'm here tonight is to uh, apply and renew that application. Prospera does several things for the region and for the business community. Um, we provide no cost business assistance. Uh, that's through uh, one-on-one business counseling. We also offer a range of professional trainings to anyone that's looking to start or grow a business in our region. We provide loan financing through the forum of gap financing, so we generally partner with banks to do business loans, um, anywhere in Galton and Park County. Um, we do a range of professional referrals, depending a lot of, a business owner might need. Um, getting help in the, in areas that we're not, you don't have expertise at, or it's not appropriate for us. Um, business development grants, that's a huge area where we work with uh, business clients to align either with a state or federal program uh, to grow and expand. And then regional economic development, we have a range of things we work on. So the fact sheet I handed out was just a really quick, very quick overview, but just know that um, my request tonight is really that formal application we make, the Department of Commerce. Um, I've provided the city with a draft letter. You're welcome to edit and modify as you need to. And um, that's why I'm here. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them or but I don't, I didn't come with a big presentation. That's maybe for another, another time if you really want.
Questions, do you have?
Data or details.
Um, I just want to say thanks for all you do. Um. I, wonderful program you guys run. I enjoy getting the updates via email and stuff like that. Um, you've helped a lot, a lot of people. Thank you. Great organization. Can't say enough about you guys. Okay, thank you. Thanks for your time.
Uh, I think there'll be a couple more, yeah.
I appreciate your being here because I've been hearing about this program for so long. And now it's actually here. And I want to thank you. I mean, it's exciting to greet this thing and what the future is. So it's important to the city, yeah. And uh, time is perfect. So thank you. Thank you.
I was gonna ask you, I, I think when I was first on the commission, maybe in twenty eighteen or nineteen, you, you all came and did like a report. There was, was there a report just on Park County?
A while ago.
Yeah.
I know I've, I've spoken here probably a few times either on economic profile. I've done presentations on like downtown redevelopment. Um.
I think there was one that might have been like a Park County specific section.
We do have, we do have economic data for Park County on our website. And you can go there now and pull up some.
Yeah, I think it tells the business.
It's pretty basic census data and Bureau of Labor and Statistics. So you can go to our web, prospera.org and, and get that. Uh, no cost. Um, that'll probably wrap, it's a platform we're using that'll probably wrap up at the end of this calendar year. Um, we're not going to continue that specifically, partly because so much of it's available online pretty easily anyways. Um, and then we can customize it depending on what the city wants to do. I think um, uh, Park County Community Foundation's doing really good survey work, so that there's certainly data there. And really, that's probably not our expertise. There's people smarter than I am for what's out there for some of the data. It's endless, right? You can go really, really deep. Um, there is some interesting stats, just I think in general for Park County about workforce, median wages, the number of remote workers. There are some interesting numbers that are worth.
If you wouldn't mind.
Paying attention to.
If you wouldn't mind sending a link to the manager so he can pass it along, that would be really helpful because I'm on your website and I've looked around and I have.
Do you go, it's right there, it says economic profile?
It takes me to Galton County. I'm seeing more Galton, so I'll just.
You just gotta dig for, I'll, I'll, I'll get it too.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm excited to see it and thank you for coming tonight.
Okay.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we'll move on. Thanks for being here, Paul.
Thank you guys.
All right, next on the agenda is a resolution.
Oh, one thing before we move on. Um, I didn't see the letter of support.
It's in the um, action items, so it's at the back of the packet. It's on page. It's on page. Thirty seven. Of the packet, so it's, um.
Oh, oh, that, that's it, okay.
It's on the city.
Put my glasses on, I found it.
That's okay, it's in a different part of the.
Alright.
Alright, so now we're to the resolution. Resolution five one one two, authorizing the submission of a community development block grant application for planning activities to update the city zoning ordinance. Mister Gager.
Thank you Chair News, the item before you is a continuation of the, um. Public hearings that began in mid-August, soliciting community input on community development block grant projects. And you may recall in the last meeting, uh, there was a resolution to authorize submission of a construction grant related to, or grant application related to. Be this, um, water and sewer improvements, and the item here is a, uh, planning grant application. Um, to help us fund the overhaul of the zoning code. And, um, so, uh, we are pursuing a, a fifty thousand dollar, um, grant through the Department of Commerce and. Um, had the opportunity actually last week in Helena to have a brief conversation with the, uh, person who is pretty. Intimately involved with the grant program and they're excited to receive our application. And, uh, and, and I think try to help the city of Livingston out, so I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Any clarifying questions? No, right. So how about our motion on resolution five one one two?
I'll move to approve resolution five one one two and authorize the chair to sign. Second.
A motion by Lyons and a second by Friedman, and now we'll open it to public comment. So if anyone wants to give public comment on this agenda item, welcome Lindy.
Yeah, I have a question, I thought the view this to ports were county, aren't they a donut in a donut?
Right, so yeah, they've been going through a long process to work towards annexation, they're still county, but they're working with the city to do it in a.
That was my only question, forever that was county, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great question. Is there anyone else in the? Room that would like to give comment on resolution five one one two, I see Patricia making her way.
Patricia Babel, two oh four East Calendar Street. I am. As I have said before, am enormously supportive of. Our moving ahead. With, uh, the renovation of View Vista and. The C D B G, G block brands, I've. Been monitoring those for the last twenty four years. Um, and I think this is probably the best use. Let's come down the pipe on C D B G. I'd like to, I don't know if it's possible, but it seems to me. That if we were to take. Uh, cooperative. Um. Parks, basically trailer parks. And put tiny houses on them, I go through this again and again. And they don't have to, they actually, I, I put on Facebook. They're fairly close to each other and they kind of like a little village, they're very nice. Um. That this could lead to. Some of our, uh, concerned about affordable housing. And, and my understanding is it's like a maximum seven million dollars per. Per C D B G grant, and I've seen C D B G grads going for. Things that not, were not even as close to worthy as. As this particular scenario is, so I. I just really would applaud the city if it were to. Really explore this, and especially since we have such a wonderful. Tiny house manufacturing. Business in, uh. In Park County, and if you haven't been out to see that, you probably have. They're really quite wonderful and very forward thinking and, um. The tiny houses, it can get you to the winter wonderfully. So you're not, it, it, it is none of stereotypes, the tiny houses apply to what they are doing. So I just applaud what the city is doing, thank you.
Thanks Patricia. Is there anyone else that wants to give comment on resolution five one one two? Remembering that it is about. A grant application for. Zoning update. Zoning code update.
Yes, hi, this is Leslie Pidal, the Livingston area Chamber of Commerce, um, so I'm a bit confused because I'm looking at the city's, um, agenda. This is about a block grant application for planning activities to update the city zoning ordinance, but then. The, I looked and watched the, um, zoning agenda. And they didn't discuss this grant. I mean, it would go in front of the board before it comes to you. And it's not on, I mean, I printed everything and I've looked through it twice. Um, so when did the grant get discussed with the zoning board?
I will do clarifying questions again after, so make a note.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I won't be so confused.
Yeah.
Because, uh, there's a portion in here about the gateway overlay zone, so then I would definitely be back up here to have a question about that. Thank you.
Thanks Leslie. I'll look online then, anybody online? Not seen anyone? Oh, I see Tammy Lewis just came off mute, Tammy, did you want to give comment on resolution five one one two?
No, that was an accident, sorry.
No worries. Alright, uh, public comment for resolution five one one two is closed. Commissioners, are you okay with me starting with follow up? Question, um. Mister Gager, can you give some? Offer some clarity to. What goes before the zoning commission and not in terms of like grants versus code? Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you, Chair News, the. Uh, Livingston zoning commission is. Powered statutorily and through the Livingston Municipal Code with. Oversight of text and map amendments related to zoning within the city of Livingston. And so, um, when, when, uh. We are requested either by members of the public, um, or, or. Uh, it comes about from a staff level or from internally a, a request from the commission. Um, those, those zoning, uh, map and text amendments to the Livingston Municipal Code work through the zoning commission, however. Um, when we as a, a staff look to fund, um, certain projects and programs of the city, those are. Um, more of a, uh, executive branch decision, and so, um, the, the city commission has, um, very, uh. Forsidely included a hundred and twenty five thousand in this year's budget for the zoning code update. And, um, while we at a, a staff level expect that, um, about to be sufficient for our needs. Uh, we do recognize that it may not be, and, and, um, and so it's, uh, after some conversations with the state, it seemed prudent to pursue this grant. As a way to either supplement or offset the funds that the city commission has budgeted. Um, because we may, uh, receive a proposal for more than a hundred and twenty five thousand, and so we, uh, simply want to be prepared. Um, and so, um, that is why the, the resolution is before you. And if, if we are successful in this endeavor, um, we will, uh, run, well, regardless of whether we're successful with this grant. We will run a request for proposal process, um, that will result in a contract that will be above my, um, purchasing authority, my signature authority, and so the approval. For that will come back to you folks at that time as well. And then, of course, as we work through the, uh, the zoning code update process. Uh, naturally, we do expect text amendments to come out of that process. And those, uh, recommended text amendments will be worked through the zoning commission. And will appear up to you folks, uh, in the form of an ordinance for final.
Thank you, do you all have any other clarifying questions? At this time? Alright, so we've done public comment, now we may deliberate. Who would like to go first? Anyone?
We couldn't ride, we.
Yeah, I think this is great, I, there's a lot of funds. That have been allocated towards this sort of work across the state, so I think it makes a lot of sense for the city of Livingston to go after the funding. For exactly these types of projects, I'm really excited. I'm also excited that. It won't all fall on taxpayers. And the state can help us out. Um, this will be great. It's another huge. Thing on the list of growth policy updates is this particular item, so thank you for bringing it to us. If nothing else, I think we're ready to vote. We have a motion by Lyons and a second by Freeman, roll call please.
Chair News. Commissioner Freeman. For Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is action item A, letter of support from Prospera, Mister Gager.
Thank you Chair News, as we, uh, just heard from Prosper Business Network, they are. The county's certified regional development corporation and have been since two thousand twelve. And the item before you folks is a, uh, request for a letter of support for an application to support. Prosper Business Networks, um, seeking to retain the designation of the, the Certified Regional Development Corporation, so there is a, a draft letter. Support included in the packet, and I will stand for any questions you may have.
Any questions? This, not Mister Commissioner Lyons.
Have there been any other interested parties not inserting that ball? The city has not been approached by any other interested parties, um, but I, I do understand that it is a multi-county designation. And so I'm unaware that there are other parties that might have approached other, um, entities within the county, but we've not been approached by.
Any other questions? Alright. How about a motion? On action item A.
I'll make a motion to approve letters for Prosper Business Network. Second.
Motion by Schwartz and second by Friedman. Uh, public comment. Anybody in the room? Hi Leslie.
Leslie, Chamber of Commerce, um, shorten that one, uh, I think this is, so I've worked with Prosper for years. And I think that the city continuing the efforts of working with, um, Prospera and. Their endeavors here in our county, um, over the years has been wonderful, and yes, there is another, there's the Northern Rocky Mountain Economic Development. Group, um, which they all kind of work together, um, in a little bit of a different format. Uh, the Department of Commerce often has a list of interested parties and, um, another division under the, the governor's office on. Yeah, I'm sure you heard about the, um, rollout, the red carpet program, uh, which is kind of like a international program that he's doing to get. Large, um, everything from tech companies and other companies here, so we tend to be able to market our communities, um, I, as well as the Chamber of Commerce and many other chambers. Get to market our communities as well, but we all work through, um, the same format together, and I work with Prospera, uh, most recently, uh, Shayna, um. Blazer, laser. Don't tell, I screwed it up again. Um, so, uh, has been looking for an office here, and she's hoping to get approved to get her office here, so maybe the friends will help, um. That, uh, she, women in business division, so we actually have quite a few, as you know, here in the entire county, as well as in the city. Uh, women, um, business owners, and they use Prosper's, um, services and, um, Shayna's. Uh, classes and many other classes that, uh, Prospera offers and, uh, many of the other loans, especially during the flood and even prior to that during COVID. Many people took advantage of the Prospera programs, so, um, I'm, uh, glad to see that you would entertain this and, uh, give a letter of support, uh, I did. Thank you.
Thanks Leslie. So anyone else that wants to offer a public comment? Don't see anyone in the room, how about online? I see Robert Liberty's off mute, did you want to give comment on this, Robert?
What's the next item?
Okay. No worries. Alright, then public comment is closed for. Action item A. Um, we have a motion by Schwartz and second by Friedman, any comments from the commission? Alright, we're ready to vote. Roll call please.
Chair News.
For.
Commissioner Freeman.
For.
Commissioner Schwartz.
For.
Commissioner Lyons.
For.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda. Growth policy update. Mister Gager.
Thank you Chair News, and before we go here tonight, I, um, thought I would take the opportunity while we had a little bit of a, uh, quiet agenda to. Report back briefly to the commission on, um, the, uh, staff's effort to work through implementing the. Um, goal strategies and objectives of the growth policy. And so you may recall that, uh, we, we had a conversation in early February, uh, where I presented a plan to implement the growth policy. And, um, and, and so that's, uh, the last. Last eight months have certainly been busy ones that, that you folks have. Um, have worked on some of these items, and so the, the goal tonight really is to update the commission. On, on our progress and then to, um, kind of talk about some of the, the coming initiatives, so. Um, both you folks, as well as members of the, of the community are aware of, um, some projects to expect and, and initiatives that are upcoming. So, um, just ve- very, very briefly here, I'll just kind of talk about the, a, a quick summary of the growth policy that you may recognize from last time. Uh, do a quick review of that initial work plan that was presented. And, uh, and, and then touch upon some of the, the future work that we will, we will do, so. The, the growth policy, uh, as you recall, um, touched upon nine, uh, topic areas, including. The economy, housing, intergovernmental coordination, land use, local services, natural resources. Population and community character, public facilities and transportation. And within the, the, the growth policy there, uh, and, and across those nine topic areas, there were twenty one goals. Um, and, and seventy four, to accomplish seventy four objectives, and, and that was, uh, being done through two hundred and nineteen different strategies. Um, and, and each of those strategies, uh, was. Designed to result in, in one of nine different outcomes, um, that we see here, and, and, uh, some of these. Uh, including regulatory action, um, and, and grants, uh, will, will come up to you folks. And then there are some, uh, related to, um, partnerships, data collection and, and whatnot, that, that may not rise up to, to, to your level. Um, and, and in fact, the, uh, I would say probably the, the first strategy that, that we can say. Uh, as a city that we accomplished was a certification for the VCD USA. And, uh, and so that's an example of, of one that came, came up to you folks, so. Um, uh, you, you may recall in, in February that, that I presented a, an initial work plan. And, uh, and, and so just kind of touching upon, upon that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm here to, to report that the, uh, the, the staff and I have. Gotten to work and, and, um, are, um, at various stages on a hundred and one of the two hundred and nineteen strategies. Included in the growth policy, and those hundred and one strategies, um, feed fifty six objectives and, and nineteen of the twenty one goals. So our, our progress, uh, to date has been, been fairly widespread. Um, and, and, and kind of again, just to, to remind you folks that the strategies. You know, are, are, are very widespread across those, um, that, those topic areas within the growth policy, so I will. Somewhat quickly work through the, the initial work plan, um, and, and just provide you a, a bit of an update, again, a, a lot of this is, is probably rather familiar. To you folks, but, uh, in the, the land use recommendations, you know, we, we just recently had a bit of a conversation, uh, about the zoning ordinance update and. You know, the, the green checks certainly do not. Uh, denote that we are done with any work or done with rework, um, simply that it is something that is, is in progress with us. Um, at, at various stages of, of staff or community review, and so, um, the, the zoning ordinance update, you may recall that we've, uh, that we've engaged. Um, Cody Marks earned her team from Great West Engineering, um, through a, a community technical assistance program. Uh, grant with the state and, and, uh, we actually had a, a meeting next week, um. Cody and her team are, are bringing back their, uh, initial, the results of their initial review of the, the zoning ordinance, uh, relative. To the growth policy, um, that will inform, uh, the, the future contract that we just spoke about through RFP, and so we are. Uh, moving forward with the zoning ordinance update, hope to have a contractor, uh, on board, uh, shortly after the holidays. And, and that will kick off what we expect will be about a year long process with the community. Um, and, and, uh, next, uh, internally, um, we are, uh, drafting, uh, updated subdivision regulations. For, uh, review by the commission. And, um, our team is, uh, is working to incorporate not only, uh, legislative changes that were enacted this year by the, the state. But also, um, some of the, the policy changes and, and, um, policy ideas, uh, in, included in the growth policy. And there are quite a few that, that impact subdivision regulations. Um, so I'm, I'm optimistic that you will see, uh, and, and we will have an opportunity to have a conversation about updated subdivision regulations by the end of this year. Um, we, we've got staff hard at work on that, and, um, you know, skipping over the, the future land use map, which I'll, I'll be honest, we really have not. Uh, accomplished a heck of a lot on. accomplished a heck of a lot on, although we've had some interesting conversations related to, to, to land use outside of the city for annexations and, and other requests from, from folks. And then third, or excuse me, finally, the, the plant unit development ordinance, which was, you know, one of the more concrete recommendations of the, of the growth policy as far as land use is concerned. You may recall in the last meeting that that, that ordinance passed its, its first reading and will be back before you folks on November seventh. So we are working full steam ahead on, on the land use recommendations. As far as housing, certainly we, not, not to say again that we've accomplished all of these, but we are working on, on several of those tools of the Housing Action Plan, including the, the work that is happening through the Park County Housing Coalition, which is only a, a few meetings in, but there's a, a, a lot happening there as well. And, and, and within the urban renewal plan as well. We, the, the URA Board recently adopted guidelines for the Residential Rehabilitation Grant Program and is now accepting applications for, for that program, which will provide up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit for every unit of, of residential that, that is returned to the market or brought to the market in the, the URA District, which is relatively the area from the, the avenue or excuse me, the, the, the alley between Third and Yellowstone, moving west out to of, of that D Street. There's some other portions of that, but we are working with with, within the, the goals of the, the URA plan and tools of the URA plan to accomplish some of the, the goals of the growth policy. Including that one. And, and we're excited for the, the opportunity that, that that residential rehabilitation grant program represents to, to bring some housing on online in the downtown in the short term. And, and then you may recall the, the third goal or focus area was, was in resiliency. We did have some work with a, a community resilience plan through the, the AmeriCorps Vista Volunteers. So I, I probably could include a green check mark on, on that top one, although we've, we've, we've transitioned the, the Vista Volunteers in the community. And so we're at a bit of a pause there. That said, the Energy Action Plan, you folks may recall you included funding in the FY twenty-four budget for that. And, and we are starting the, the scope of work development process in, in my office on that one. And, and hope to be able to, to bring that one out. And flood mitigation and, and response planning. We are actively involved in that and actually about two weeks ago, we entered into the, a new federal fiscal year and we were, the city of Livingston was lucky enough to be selected as one of three nationwide projects with the US Army Corps of Engineers. What's known as their Silver Jacket Program, but it is an interagency flood mitigation planning effort. And we specifically have been selected for a levee breach analysis, which will when we get the hydrology and hydraulic study data from the FEMA floodplain mapping exercise. That, that study, which tells us really how much water is moving half-assed through town in certain circumstances. We'll take that data and, and work with the Army Corps really to understand in the event that there is a, a breach in the levee, really how how, how deep the water would get, how quickly in certain parts of town. And that will help, of course, with our emergency response planning. And, and then also in the long future conversations in the community concerning flood mitigation and, and, and different projects and improvements possibly there. So we are, are, are pushing forward in, in that regard. And, and then certainly the, the fourth item, place making and community character is, is one that we are, are pushing forward on. The, the downtown master plan consultants were in over the summer and will return on November fifteen, sixteen and seventeen for a number of community events and opportunities for for, for the community to provide some feedback on, on what they would like to see in, in the downtown in the coming years. And happy to report that we, we do have some student involvement in that through the, the high school. So we can gather input because, you know, today's, today's students are, are tomorrow's downtown business owners and, and residents, right? And so important to en- ensure that it represents their, their needs. With regard to cultural and historic amenities, we talked a little bit earlier about the, the upcoming signage program and, and effort that will, will go underway and once we have the, the logo and branding settled. But also, you know, some of these strategies are, are ones that we've actually already worked on, including the, the mural on the the underpass there was, was an element of the, the growth policy, which I guess actually maybe one could say we achieved before V-City USA, but I, I struggle to mark that one completes after just, just one piece of public art, right? I, I think there's more to come there. And, and, and site plan reviews are, are one that we have chatted about at a staff level and, and we have a, a host of ideas, but the, the subdivision regulation review is, is kind of taking over priority and precedence over the, the site plan reviews. So something we do look forward to, to getting involved in in next calendar year. And then gateway overlay, lay design districts, we, that was on the agenda as a commenter pointed out earlier in the evening for last night's zoning commission meeting. Unfortunately, we were unable to achieve a quorum of the zoning commission last night. And so the, the conversation there has been delayed out until our next meeting. That said, we've had some conversations with the tree board at their last meeting related to trees within those districts because that is, is one element. And so work continues the pace, though not at the, the pace that it might have otherwise. And, and so I, I will use that as a, a springboard really to, to talk about the, the future work plan. And, and, and again, you know, just kind of sticking to these four focus areas because I, I think they really do encapsulate a lot of the work and a lot of the change that the growth policy has guided us on. And so, you know, with, with regard to the land use recommendations, as I indicated, you know, that zoning ordinance update will be about a year-long process. So we, we really aren't going to, to, to take on more tasks related to chapter eleven. Well, really because there were only four tasks in chapter eleven and we're, we're pushing forward on, on two of the, the three remaining. And, and the future land use map will, will start to take shape in the coming year. On, on housing, we will continue working to implement the Housing Action Plan as, as well as those strategies related to urban renewal. And, and we also, based on some conversations in the last week up in Helena, are moving forward on, on strategy five point one, five, five point five related to state housing funds. And, and I'm, I'm optimistic that we will see some, some positive impacts on, on the creation of housing units in the city of Livingston as a, a result of those efforts because there really are some, some pretty powerful programs that, that, that some folks seem very excited about for Livingston. And, and then with regard to resiliency, I, I, I kind of mentioned some of the, the flood mitigation and response planning work with Silver Jacket Study and the FEMA floodplain mapping, but I'd also say on, on Thursday of this week at ten AM, we are kicking off a, a channel migration zone mapping update process as well with our, with our county partners. And then, you know, adding to, to the, the workload with regard to resiliency. We are at a staff level working towards a creation of a stormwater utility. Because as, as we approach a population of ten thousand, it will be required of us to, to, to treat our, our stormwater before it is discharged into, to the Yellowstone. And so we've, we've begun that work. And this is a, a conversation that we will continue through the FY twenty-five budget process when it kicks off shortly after the new year. And, and then similarly, in the somewhat in the land use area, but wasn't included in chapter eleven, the floodplain review process, we at the, the staff level have done, done a lot of work internally on floodplain review and, and excited to start to formalize some of that work. Which will help in our, our land use application review process as we, we move forward. And, and then lastly, in, in place making and, and community character, as I indicated in the, the cultural and historic amenities, I, I think we're, we've got a, a long way to go there and, and more work to be done. Similarly, site plan reviews and gateway overlay districts will, will continue to move forward. And, and as you may recall, we, we did fund a, a parks master plan in the FY twenty-four budget. And so staff has been working on, on finalizing that RFP so we can release it. And we've had some, some conversations with the, the Parks and Trails Committee on, on that effort as well. Those will continue. So these are, are really the efforts that, that the team will continue working on and and will guide our work for the remainder of, of the fiscal year, which started about two and a half months ago. So I will, I'll stand for any questions that, that you folks may have. And, and also I would say we welcome suggestions on, on any elements that you would like us to focus on, any areas that we may have missed, any considerations on, on any of these as, as we move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gager. Are you folks okay? Commissioners with me opening to public comment first and then anyone from the commission, since some people came just to talk about this. Okay. All right. So we'll start with people in the room. Is there anybody in the room that wanted to give public comment? Remembering that we're not making a decision tonight, but there's a chance to engage. Come on up, Lyndy.
I guess because my family's been here from the beginning, I would like to see us implement a signage program where it's just one brown board that identifies our six islands that were here originally. I think that'd be fun, you know? Because everyone says Ninth Street Island and it's Erbach Island and then Seabek. And just to let people know that Sacagawea Park is on Swindlehurst Island, I think that family kind of deserves a little bit of recognition. And then after our historic flood last summer, I didn't know if you guys were aware that we added a whole new definition to a flood. It's a river that's too big for its bridges. And, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Lyndy. Anybody else want to give comment? Come on up. You can start with your name and address, please.
Two oh one West Kaiser Street. I am relatively new to Livingston. I appreciate everything about this town that I have seen so far and been involved with. And I wanted to congratulate you on the plan that you're working on. What you just reviewed of what it was great, well done, extensive and thoughtful. My only comment was the book that was given to you by I, I would highly recommend that you take, take that into account. I've been involved in land conservation, historic preservation for my whole career. And to drive sustainability and growth, to maintain the integrity of the historical areas can be a very big economic driver for the city of town. I may not need to tell you things you already know, but I just wanted to reinforce that preserving the integrity of this town's historical character will help with the economic growth and development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment in the room? How about online? Hi, Robert. You're welcome to come off mute and offer comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Robert Liberty. I'm presenting the testimony of Ken Cochran, President of Friends of Park County, who realized this afternoon that it is a competing board meeting. His address is sixty Majestic Ridge Trail Livingston. Friends of Park County welcomes this agenda item and the approval of resolution five one one two because the implementation of the twenty twenty and growth policy is one of our top priorities. I'm here to offer five suggestions for implementation steps that will make your life as city officials and staff easier and accelerate the transition of the growth policy from a plan to a place. First, we have heard reports of criticism of the city's denial of some development applications, politically brave decisions that were based at least in part on the failure of those applications to satisfy the requirements of the growth policy. The problem, as you know well, is that under Montana law, growth policies operate in a gray area as supplementary standards that must be considered, but are not regarded as a firm legal basis for your decisions. To put you on a stronger legal footing and to make it clear to applicants what kinds of developments you would welcome and approve, you can adopt a short ordinance making key growth policy goals, objectives and policies, criteria for making decisions on subdivision and development applications, as well as zone changes. This ordinance could be replaced after the twelve to possibly eighteen months. So we'll take to begin and complete the update of the zoning ordinance. Second, we are all aware that many residents around the city in the extraterritorial jurisdiction are fearful that the city intends to annex them and zone their land for development. There's nothing in the growth policy that indicates that, quite the opposite. But replacing the city's old two thousand seven annexation plan with a one or two paragraph annexation policy that reflects and reinforces the growth policy would go a long way to alleviating those fears. Third, some uncertainty has been created by transportation and sewer and water system expansion studies, which were never reconciled with your growth policy. These include the twenty seventeen North Side Transportation Study and the twenty eighteen Preliminary Engineering Report for a seventeen million dollar investment in the city sewer system. As long as the status of these studies remains unclear, they create doubt and speculation about whether the city is fully committed to smart growth, infill and redevelopment. Adopting a short and simple city service extension policy and revisions to the capital improvement plan reflect the growth policy and requiring annexations as prerequisite to service extensions would remove this uncertainty. Fourth, you might wish to ask the planning board to help you identify the highest priority issues for changes to the zoning ordinance, implement the growth policy, including the future land use map, and pass along those priorities to the consultant team that will be updating the zoning ordinance. Fifth and last, now that the city is only about two years away from starting the next growth policy update, now would be a good time to begin thinking about how that update process could be designed to achieve the goal of full implementation within one year of adoption of the update. Your public service combines heavy responsibility with minimum, minimal financial or psychic rewards. So believe us when we say it is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert and Ken via Robert. Is there anyone else that wants to offer comment online? Well, I did see Leslie stand up in the room. Did you want to? Come on up.
Thank you, Leslie Feigl. Actually, representing, I am the president of It's My Land LLC. And I just have to make a comment after Mister Liberty spoke there in regards to It's My Land representation for the ETJ. As you know, you, a few of you have attended our meetings. And we are about, the representation is for anti-zoning from the city into the ETJ properties unless offered or asked for by the property owners themselves. So just to clarify on that, it is not about the, we're not about annexing. So it's, it's again, it's about the property rights to the owner, having the opportunity to choose for annexation or zoning. And I just wanted to clarify that because that was be this.
Thanks, Leslie. Is there anyone else that would like to give comment on this? All right. We'll move to, public comment is closed on the growth policy update. And now go to the commission. So Mister Gager was looking for feedback. And also, if there's anything that we wanted to point out that maybe you didn't make the list. Commissioners, feedback, anything you want to offer, Mister Gager?
My compliments to you and your staff for work that we've done so far, that you guys have done. I don't have anything specific at this, at this time. I think we're moving in the right direction and I sure, certainly couldn't couldn't add any anything more than what you guys are doing already. So the growth policy was well far, well tended. And we're making progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Other commissioners? Commissioner Lyons?
I will echo Commissioner Schwartz's comments about gratitude for making progress on the growth policy. I think there's a resounding commitment among the commission and I think also
And I think also the citizens of Livingston that we want. To see it move from as, as a public commenter mentioned gray area to actual um, policy that directs. The way in which um, the, the, our legal ability to um, direct growth going forward. I also appreciate the opportunity to kind of look into the workings of the city. And, and see how you're thinking about um, how to implement that policy, what that has looked like thus far and it's going to look like going forward. And I trust your assessment of what your staff's capacity is to, to try and accomplish these many goals, strategies, and objectives. The, the one, the only thing that stood out to me that I saw in there um, was the, for lack of a better word, the only word that's coming to mind is forsaking of um, giving any intention currently to, site plan review over um, some of the alternatives. I, I trust that, that there was good reason for that. Um, but I see that as a, as in, as an integral part of this process. And I think maybe as the commission has recently seen applications for subdivision, that might be where our, our, what's the hottest on our mind. However, um, I think that changes to the built environment, because that's really what we're talking about, is the way in which our built environment is going to change. Can happen to almost an equal magnitude through um, proposals that come via site plan. That, that would be addressed via site plan review. Um, I, I trust that you, I, I know that you understand that as well. But that of, of all that I saw there, that was the only thing that stood out to me is hmm, maybe I'm a little concerned that that's not. A priority. Thank you.
Thank you. What say you?
I say you, good stuff. Uh, after watching television the last few days of all this chaos going on. And they come here and it's nice. And we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah. All good stuff. Oh. But we need the public, you get the feedback and uh, have been doing this for many years. And right now we're just moving, we're moving forward all the time, which is just like, especially as a city manager. And then they have the support of the community. I think we're down for it. But I want to thank people for watching over us. And uh, we've got good people. And we're looking forward to a lot of other good stuff happening. So, how you?
Thank you. So this time a year ago, I believe you were introducing yourself to our whole city in the Shane Center. I think around this time of day, actually.
Oh, wait.
So I'm, it's pretty fun to get this update on the one year anniversary of meeting Mr. Danger before we hired him. Um, I, there's some things I really like that are happening right now. I appreciate um, all, I, all I call Commissioner Lyons said that it's great to get um, a look into the executive branch, because so much of what's happening is not just the commission meetings. And it's really wonderful to see um, the balance across priority areas, but also across city departments. So I appreciate that you put together a plan where you can move a maximum amount of big priorities forward in less than a year. Um, it's, it's pretty impressive. I hope we can get some print copies for commissioners that might want paper copies like myself. Um, I, I think it must be challenging to come up with a list of priorities based on that very large document. Um, I know when we interviewed you, that was one of the things that we talked about a lot was um, moving the growth policy forward. And we needed your expertise to come up with a plan that would work for the whole city. I agree with Commissioner Lyons that I'm looking forward to the site plan review process moving forward. Um, particularly with some of the state laws that changed, I think it'll be great to get the executive branch in a place where, and I think I saw this in your notes on the slide too, like where it's reflecting what the community needs are. And I also appreciate that this growth policy really, really is not about the five of us commissioners. It's about the sixteen hundred people that gave comments. So what's happening inside government right now is really a reflection of what the people of Livingston want from government, not even what the five of us want. But what the, you know, the eight thousand people in town want, and that's pretty amazing, I think, to have a government that's working for the people literally. Um, and directly prioritizing government work based on the citizens is amazing. Um, that's democracy at its finest. Um, I'm looking forward to a lot of the things, the storm water utility, the flood plain review. Um, I know more master plans, people are wondering when are we going to be done, but I think it's great to get these updates on how we're moving plans forward. So people can see we're not just planning, there's also action happening. So um, as you're able to work in those updates, I think the community would appreciate it. Yeah, I don't have anything else to add. This is fantastic. I'm excited. It's a good time to be in Livingston. Anything else you all want to add? Fantastic update, Mr. Gager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. And this will be in the minutes, I suppose, for community members that want to see it, right? Maybe a little watch online.
Yep, and we will link it on the uh, website on the growth policies page.
Oh, fantastic. Awesome. That'd be great. Great. Well, if nothing else, we'll move on. City manager comments. Mr. Gager.
Uh, thank you, Chair Noots. I uh, had the opportunity last week to spend some time in Helena with Chair Noots and some city staff members at the, League of Cities in Town meeting. And uh, I'd say we learned a lot and met a lot of people and some uh, exciting initiatives coming out of that, especially some in the, the housing front. Uh, our planning director, Jen Seaberson, went up to Great Falls today to um, uh, participate in the Montana Main Street Conference, if I'm not mistaken. And so excited to see what she comes back with. We heard from more than a few people in uh, in Helena that uh, Livingston was their, their favorite city in Montana. Or, you know, at least the top three for some of them. So um, I, I think we're very fortunate and recognized as uh, as one of Montana's finer communities. Um, and then I am, I'm also pleased uh, at a future um, meeting, I will introduce you to our new H R director. Uh, Carrie Rubin, who started last Tuesday. And uh, she's uh, already making quite a, a difference in the organization. So uh, happy to, to announce that position's been built.
That's awesome. Thank you. Commissioner Lyons. Expensive.
I, I, I usually try and have something uh, clever, fun to share that I haven't had the opportunity to produce that yet. So.
Team name?
So I will pass it to my clever colleague, Commissioner Schwartz.
Not, uh, Lyndy Gibson's be a tall and bad jokes and stuff. I uh, went ahead and then um, enrolled us in the Halloween, first annual Halloween chili cook-off. Um, that will be on um, October thirty first.
And he means.
I mean, uh, says commissioner. Um, we'll be keep competing against Mr. Gager and his, his crew and the fire department so far. And trying to get more departments to join in. But it, um, Tuesday, October thirty first, one thirty, one thirty at Livingston Civic Center. And uh, meanwhile, we have to come up with our name for the chili and our team. So.
Thank you for your leadership on that.
Oh, gee, yeah. Glad to lead on something. How you?
Well, it's great. Thank you. He's got award-winning chili. Yeah, so.
I said it all. It was great, great meeting, I think. I want to thank the folk who'd be in here. And uh, we're going forward all the time, which is good. Really good stuff.
Yeah.
How you?
Uh, I would just second what Mr. Gager said about the league meeting. It was really great. And it wasn't just me saying Livingston is the best, which I always do. But it, it was really fantastic and there's a lot of opportunities. And I appreciate that staff also went and I feel like um, we got a good, we spread out. We, we met a lot of people and we learned a lot of information that we can bring back to the city and I'm excited about it. Um, I will say it was fun to uh, see my colleague, a councilperson in Billings. Who, when I was able to introduce him to some city staff, was shocked that Livingston had a policy analyst and Billings did not. And maybe he was a little bit jealous of the fact that we have Greg here. So um, it's pretty great that Livingston's really forward-thinking on how to move community initiatives forward. So I'm also excited that roles are getting filled. And we're doing lots of hiring. So thank you. It's been a long time. A long time area of, of concern, I think, for the commission is how do we keep the executive branch staff? So thank you for prioritizing staff. But that's only something you can do, not us. Um, and I would just note for the commission that it's the time of year where we get to participate with our manager in his yearly evaluation process. So that's going to be coming up again soon. The contractors we selected are working with Mr. Gager to move that process forward. So um, we should each probably be expecting to hear from them in the near future. Does that sound right, Mr. Gager?
Uh, that is correct. We will kick off the process at the next meeting and can, on uh, November seven. And uh, conclude it on November twenty one.
Great, great. So. That's it. How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Back it.
Motion by Freeman is seconded by Schwartz. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Uh, this Livingston City Commission meeting is adjourned at six fifty one P M. Have a good night, everyone.